Okay, 9:00 AM, Monday, March the 28th, 2022. Wilson County Commissioners' Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Pastor Benny Herrera of the Forestville Christian Fellowship Church.
Thank you, sir. And we bow our heads. Father, we just thank you, Lord, that we come thanking you for, Lord, your mercy and your grace and love. But we thank you, Lord, that our county, Wilson County, is blessed. We thank you, Lord, for this time and this meeting and this courthouse and this room. Lord God, decisions that need to be made, not just for today, but, Lord, for generations to come, Lord God. We thank you. As our county grows, Lord God, and population comes, we just thank you, Lord, that in every situation and issue, we put you first. For, Lord, if we seek you first, you will always give us the answers. And I thank you, Lord, for this meeting, for these men, the women, everyone here, Lord God. Father, decisions and their families, all the workers of every precinct, we thank you, Father, for their lives and their families. We thank you for the service of these men, Lord God, that are committed and dedicated to do your will here in this county for each and everyone. So, Father, we thank you as we call on your presence of your Holy Spirit. We give you the praise and we give you all the glory, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord God, we pray. And everyone says, "Amen."
(Inaudible) United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas State, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, Benny.
Thank you. I will have to head off, I have another meeting, but God bless you.
Thanks for speaking, Pastor Benny.
God bless you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, going to Agenda Item Number Three, public comments. We have Addendum One. Karen Robbins of County Road 323 in Atkins.
Yes.
Ms. Robbins.
Hi. This is my husband, Jack. I said, "We've been a resident since Wilson County since 1987. Moved here to teach in the Forestville ISD." I know, I recognize faces, yes, yes, and yes, Russell, I believe he was my student. We have stayed in Wilson County because we love it and it's been a great place to raise our children. I especially love jogging and have traveled many miles in the area enjoying the countryside and the beauty and simplicity. And I've watched the area grow and it continues to grow. So you ask, "Why am I here today?" Well, I went for a run on December 6th of 15 on County Road 323, a road that I'd been running on for 21 years at the time, and was mauled by three dogs. These were family pets belonging to the Dacey family. The smallest dog was Jack Russell, initiated the attack in a black lab and a shepherd join-in as a wild pack of dogs. I was on a public road, but in order to stay alive, I climbed up on the gate entrance into the third pipe and held on to the fourth. No amount of screaming help, no one came out of the house, and there was someone home. I was pulled to the ground and all three dogs had my arm in their mouth, and I let them have it because I had to focus on the sound of the approaching motor and prepare my best scream. By God's saving grace, I was rescued by two 21-year-olds. The article made the paper only because I wanted to make sure these two kids were honored, okay? It was a great article, and that was my way of thanking them and letting people know that there are still great kids out there, you know, because we see a lot of the other. I was taken to Conley Memorial Hospital and transported to BAMC, and I stayed nine days. I took rabies vaccinations, I had two surgeries and briefly saw a cancer. My arm is a savage, which means it doesn't perform like it used to. Some tendon transfers allowed me to keep my hand, which is my dominant. I was greatly supported by BAMC. I got to stay for a year on care as a civilian. I endured another skin graft and received therapy five days a week for 11 months. I retired because I almost died, and life is too short. Okay, why am I here? Okay? And I'm going to show you these because you need to see this, okay? If you're queasy, be prepared, because this is just a few of the pictures. This is what can happen when people's pets are not maintained. These are people's pets. These were not wild dogs that you might expect to see while running on a county road, okay? The Jack Russell had bitten a year and a half prior. Help had to go out. And four days prior to my event, the same dog bit my neighbor who both rode his bike past our home, okay? He could have been pulled down, he could have been a victim, okay? Last week, March 18th, in Legacy Ranch, I had another close call. And this is why I'm here. Law enforcement asked me to speak on behalf of the county. You know, I have to do my part. I've always been that kind of a person. Had it not been my husband in on his bike, I called him, he came to my rescue in this neighborhood. I had, once again, two big dogs in front of me, and it was a standoff, and they were coming closer, and they were aggressive. And these are people's pets, okay? They've been loose on other occasions. In 2017, I met a young woman who feared for me because she said, "Ma'am, there's a white truck following you." I said, "That's my husband. He's my guardian, he watches over me. I can't work out without him with me unless I go to the Laverne Park," okay? I warned her. I said, "You know, do you carry anything? This is what happened to me." And she says, "Well, no, I don't." Well, two weeks later, she found me walking. She had been bitten. And no, she didn't have anything because she didn't heed my warning, as some people don't. But I've had other close calls of little ankle biters in Legacy and other places, okay? But where can a report be made, okay? Law enforcement, they have their hands tied. I value the men in blue. They do a lot for us, but they're not dog catchers and dog watchers and dog recorders, you know? So who maintains records of loose dogs and bites, et cetera? Okay, law enforcement needs the support. Our residents need protection. Our community is growing, deserves an animal control unit, okay? It would help remove the emotion that's tied in to these issues when people try to take law in their own hands, all right? There was another article. I responded to that, too, and I asked for my name to be held from Wilson County. This was on shooting dogs. This is a little dog who went over into the neighbor after they went to break for lunch, you know? He got killed because the owner felt threatened, I suppose. And the way the article reads, you get upset because it's shooting. The dog should be the last resort, you know? Everybody goes to the defense of the dog, but people don't know what that homeowner endured when that little dog came towards him. That people don't know what, you know, bones are in our closet when we have these things. And so I say, "Put the shoes on your feet." I know an animal control is an expense. I think it's an expense that's well-deserving in our community to begin to offer some protection and a place for this information to be stored. Because had it been a year and a half prior when someone was needing help on the County Road 323 from this little Jack Russell, who's a little monster, maybe a report would have been made. Maybe they would have secured it like they should have and not a four-strand barbed wire fence, okay? And then four days before, maybe that family would have called it in. But there's no place to do this. The young man didn't want to tell his father because his father would have taken a pistol and went and made a scene. He didn't want that to happen. So the father didn't even know that the young man had been bitten, okay? The young man didn't even know these dogs didn't have rabies shots either, okay? But I live with discomfort. I have a disability. I'm not under any kind of disability. I'm a retired teacher, and that's all I get. I've lost my freedom, which is huge. The Farm Bureau met me. He said, "Your attack is the worst I've seen in more than 1,000 dog bites I've covered." And Officer Nathan Dresmala, covered my case, and he called it a crime scene. It was horrid, okay? What was left behind? Anyway, thank you for the three minutes. My attack was 16, and it was much more painful.
God bless you.
Thank you. Bless you. We cannot respond to you in Commissioners' Court because this item is not on the agenda. But if you would come back by my office sometime or stay later, I will talk to you.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Miss, that's the only public comment? Okay, moving to Agenda Item Number Four, Certificates of Completion and Awards. Okay, we have several. Okay, Web Junction Certificate of Attendance. Nikki Store has viewed the webinar. Food Access and Seed Libraries and Rural Public Libraries, March the 9th, 2022, Credit One Hour. A Certificate of Achievement. This is to certify that Nikki Store has completed the course. Managing Mobile Library Device Checkout Made Easy, March the 10th, 2022. TechSoup.org, Web Junction, Credit One Hour. Okay. Okay, FEMA, National Fire Academy. Jeffrey Pedola, Merlin Gary Martin, and Christina Moots have, are awarded this certificate in recognition of completion of the NFA State Local Partner Sponsored Training, ICS 300 Intermediate ICS for Expanding Incidents for Operational First Responders, Forestville, Texas, February 16 through 18, 2022. This course meets the NIMS requirement for ICS 300. Okay. And FEMA National Fire Academy, Jeffrey Pedola and Merlin Gary Martin are awarded this certificate in recognition of completion of the NFA State Local Partner Sponsored Training, NCS 400 Advanced ICS for Command and General Staff Complex Incidents, and MACS for Operational First Responders, Forestville, Texas, February 22nd, 23rd, 2022. This course meets the NIMS requirements for NCS 400. And, okay. County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas Commissioners Education Certificate of Completion. This is to certify that Gary Martin, Wilson County Commissioner, has successfully completed the continuing education provisions for Article 81.0025 of the Texas Local Government Code, 2021. And, let's see. County Treasurers Association of Texas, 2021 Certificate of Completion, Continuing Education. This certifies that Honorable Christina Moots, Treasurer of Wilson County, successfully completed the required hours of continuing education that was sponsored or co-sponsored by an accredited public institution of higher education and was approved by the County Treasurers Association of Texas, fully satisfying the County Treasurer's continuing education requirements established by Section 83.003 of the Local Texas Government Code, Continuing Education. Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving to Agenda Item Number Five. Richidale Jackson County Judge, John Pocum, IT Director. Discussion and potential action shall occur regarding Beckwood Fire Alarm Monitoring, Fire Alarm Functional Testing, Fire Alarm Repair, and Labor Agreements for the Wilson County Courthouse, District Justice Center, and Samford Junior Public Library.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just here, like Judge said, to just discuss. We have two prices, one that covers repairs if something does go wrong with the equipment and one that doesn't. So this is just a renewal of the contract that we've had with Beckwood before. So, yeah, the difference between the prices is with repair. So if something does go wrong, they would cover it all, labor and everything. Would be $8,635, and without repair, it would be $6,226. So a difference of about $2,400. But...
Did we do last year?
It was with the repair?
With the repair.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion, Judge, that we approve, renew the contract with Beckwood Fire and Alarm for monitoring for the antesting at the district courtroom, the library, and the courthouse.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Foul, second by Commissioner Wiley, that we approve the monitoring and repair contract. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Six, Paul File, Commissioner Precinct Two, discussing take action on certificate paid for law enforcement. Brenda, you got this?
Yes, so at the last Commissioners' Court, the court asked for me and Sheriff Stewart to meet to go over his budget to determine if there was going to be money in his salary's budget. The sheriff and I did meet last week. We determined, and he agreed and understood that there, due to the amount of overtime that is being charged to his salary line item, there is, he's right at around 50% in five months' usage of this budget. So there's not, at the rate that we're at now, there's not money in his salary budget according to the discussion from last court where it was assumed that because there were open positions, there should be money available. So I, the sheriff and I met about that, and that's where we ended last week.
Okay, so...
So I advise the sheriff...
Does that mean we take no action?
I don't know. I advise the sheriff of that information. I gave him the information and just asked him to, he could address the courthouse how he sees fit.
Paul, you have anything?
So basically, he's out of, the money we thought he might have with the vacancy has already been spent.
Correct. He's right in line right now overall in his budget and slightly a little bit over at five months. Everybody should be about 50% usage at the six-month mark, and he's right, right there. So if you were to ask me today, is he, is he under budget because he didn't have, hadn't filled positions? The answer would be no, because that money is being spent on overtime for the people who are filling in for the open positions. I think that's the way the sheriff explained it to me, so...
Okay, so I guess there will be no taking act, no action taken on Item Six? Okay, move into Agenda Item Number Seven, Richidale Jackson County Judge, Candace Sherry Wilson Advocate, discussion and take action on National Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Month, April 2022.
Yes. Hi, I'm Candace. I'm with the Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter. So we wanted to read the proclamation and declare April Central Assault Awareness Month.
Do we have the, we have a banner here somewhere, I think, don't we?
Do what now?
We have a banner we put up every April with this.
The banner? Y'all have a banner? We have a banner somewhere that we put in the lawn.
I think we've got it, so I'll have to look into it.
We have, we're going to put lights around the courthouse this year. The teal, we're going to put them up next week, and then we're going to take them down the last week of...
Do y'all still want the banner?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. That'd be perfect. So every 68 seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in fiscal year of 2021, the Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter rendered 1,135 services to 210 survivors of sexual violence and provided 61 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault exams. According to the study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and 91% of the victims do not report to the police. It is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and efforts of victims, volunteers, professionals who combat sexual assault. National and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their work and the innovation, innovative strategies to increase, ugh, incarceration of the offender. Sexual violence is a persistent and persuasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round. In order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of every year. And national, community, organizations, businesses, and in the private sector and in the media are urged through National Sexual Assault Awareness of Sexual Violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. I was going to let you read this part to proclaim April.
Okay, now therefore, we understand and do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Wilson County and all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those working towards awareness and prevention and by participating in the community of efforts. Presented this 28th day of March, 2022. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for sexual assault.
Motion, Mr. Martin, second by Commissioner Pedola, that we approve of the proclamation. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like a picture that you can take back and show Jennifer?
Yes, that'd be great. She'd be happy.
Because somebody that can...
Do we have to be in? Scare somebody.
Come over, stand, we're getting closer together. It's kind of hard for us to suck up. Stand right there.
Okay.
You're going to need a wide angle.
There we go. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much. I know, she's, she's got hives this morning, so... Sorry, I missed it.
I hope you don't.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, Richidale Jackson County Judge, discussing to take action on approving the courthouse lawn and parking lot on Saturday, June 25th, by the Lions Club for their annual Lions Club Car Show. This is the same one that we approved for a different weekend, but it was the wrong weekend.
I was going to say, I thought we did that.
So this is, this is supposed to be the correct date.
This is the right date.
Yes.
Yeah, are you sure of that, Judge?
I'm not sure because this is just what they, they said, "Hey, that's the wrong weekend." We wanted, wanted it for this weekend, so...
I'll make a motion, Judge, that we approve the Lions Club of using the courthouse parking lot for their annual, annual for the club show.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Foul, second by Commissioner Martin. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay. Agenda Item Number Nine, Richidale Jackson County Judge, discussing take action on Exhibit B to the county's tax abatement policies specifically addressing solar projects. Okay, y'all got a copy of this? And I still have questions. She rewrote this over the weekend, Ms. Fernandez did. To approach some changes that we asked her and I had asked her to make, but I don't, still don't think, and I don't think we have time before this Commissioners' Court. I want more clarification on the 100% abatement part, if that is just up to 100% or whatever. Next one, I, okay. And deduction and one-year pilot payment for agricultural rollback taxes. I'm not, I want to discuss that one and some other ones.
Yeah, and I think Ms. Fernandez also said that she wouldn't mind. She couldn't attend court today for explanation, but she would not mind attending a future court if you guys had questions.
Maybe we should put this back on the agenda for the 11th?
I think that's what she said, that she would be available on the 11th.
Because this is not, like I said, I had talked to her, it was getting close, and it was Friday, and she said, "I will rewrite it and send it to you over the weekend," which she did. Late Friday, she did it. And I'm still not real happy with what is here, so let's...
Yeah, she does say that she plans on being here on the 11th if you can put it on the agenda.
Okay, then we'll do that.
I'll make a motion to table this item until the April 11th.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Pedola, we table this item. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we're down to the nitty-gritty here. Agenda Item 10, Leanne Hoshak, EMC, 10A Utility Permit. 10A1 Permit Number 671, Southern Springs Water Supply Corporation, Precinct 3, Lakeview Circle, Review and Approve. And 82, Permit Number 672, Southern Springs Water Supply Corporation, Precinct 3, Shady Oak, Review and Approve. Can we do both, if I can, okay?
Uh, yes, let me take the other one.
Okay. Is there development? Any, any? Yes. Okay, so this is not for development, it's just for their, the development of Southern Springs? Okay.
250 houses in the first phase, and it's supposed to start soon.
Okay.
And that's from SS 1, from...
Okay, and this is... They're having to do one in Wildwood Ranch? Okay, looks like they split the lot there. Is that what they're doing? They want it Wildwood or Shady Oak?
That's a different deal than the...
Yes, but we're going to do them both at one time, aren't we? Did they split a lot? That's what they're having to do there, to get water to it? Okay.
They split a lot?
I don't remember when that took place.
Been a while back?
Probably.
It's already got... A number, but...
Probably a number. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Permit 671 in Lakeview Circle and Permit 672 on Shady Oak.
I second it.
Motion by Commissioner Pedola, second by Commissioner Wiley, we approve Permit Number 671 and 672. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving to 10B, 10B1, Permit Number 139, Equal Resources, Precinct 2, County Road 202 East, Review and Approve. Judge, they're already met with that?
New line, Mark?
New line?
Yeah.
Going from a new well to facility?
I'll make a motion, we approve Permit 129, Recall Resources, on County Road 202 East.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Pedola. Excuse me, Martin. The other one. Okay. Second by, second by Commissioner Martin.
I get them confused, too, Judge.
Yeah. Who are the good guys? Uh, do, approve Permit Number 129. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
How are we doing this morning?
Thank you. Okay, we got that taken care of. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Uh, moving right along to Agenda Item Number 11, Christina Moots, Inteent County Treasurer, Financial Report.
Okay, as you all know, I normally have them the second month, or second Commissioner's Court of the Month, and I don't this actual month. I am working with the outside officers on a few documents, and before going on and finalizing, I'm just trying to clear up some ends with them. So I will hope to have it done next month. It might be the first or the second, but I will have it.
So we'll have to have two reports next month?
Yeah, back to back.
Oh, my God.
But I will have them. That's just, I'm trying to finalize some stuff with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number 12, Jalen T. Foxer, Human Resource General Specialist, Payroll and Personal Changes.
Good morning. Um, David Raposo was hired as a dispatcher for the Sheriff's Department, making 1583 per hour at $32,000 annually effective March 25th. Angoria Ruiz resigned from her position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department effective March 12th.
Dr. McFadden, choose three.
It was that easy.
Okay. Thank you. There was no, line out of no changes, so just an informational report. Okay, here's a big one. Agenda Item Number 13, Brenda L. Trevino, County Auditor, Bills.
I'm gonna need y'all to take a deep breath. $727,029.09 is the total. Um, this is because the Texas dump trucks are in here.
The what? The dump trucks?
Uh, the dump trucks from the grant are in here, um, as well as material, the CTF material, um, that's in here as well, that's, um...
Judge. Commissioner Fowles, have you ever been to your...
No.
Not yet?
No.
Next month, you gonna give us a, for the six-month report?
Yes.
Okay.
So March 31st ends, uh, six months, will be six months for the year, so my plan is to have a mid-year review and report for you on the 11th.
Judge, I did not include in here, I'll put it on the next round, because this one was pretty high, the payments to the volunteer fire department, if you were asking about.
Okay.
If they're not in here, but I'm gonna put them on the next round.
Okay.
I've gotten two, I've gotten two reports, I'm waiting for one.
Two?
Uh, Stockdale and...
No, no Stockdale, there you go. It's gotta be Stockdale, Three Oaks, and...
Yeah, but he was asking which report I received. Stockdale and Three Oaks is whatever, seems like the legal waiting on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Pedola. Got that right, okay. Uh, did we approve the bills? Is there any more questions, additions, deletions, changes?
Commissioner Wiley, you started that tech talk grant, or is this what this...
We're gonna totally finish the project either today or tomorrow.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, that was quick.